You let me know, are we ready now?
Hey son. Let me thank all of those who are sharing in this teaching session. Thank you for tuning in. Let me thank God as well, I must thank Him. One of the joys of my life, the greatest joys, one of the greatest joys of my life, is to be able to sit down before the Word of God and look in that mirror to get a true reflection of who I am. And not only will the Word show me who I am, but will also show me how to get, or rather to correct the flaws that are evident in my life. There is no way to look at the Word of God and not see the flaws or the errors of life. But if we confess those flaws, the Scripture says, "He is faithful and just to forgive those and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness, so that when we look at ourselves again, what had been will be no more." Thankful for that. And certainly thankful for all of those persons who helped to make this possible. And today we have Brother Carrington Hill, who is standing in for Nakita and for her daughter Maya. Thank God as well for Pastor Sneed, who's been so faithful and diligent in this capacity of teaching. It's my joy. Now our lesson today is out of the book of James as it was on last week. And we're looking at James, the second chapter, verses 14 through 26. And the lesson subject is faith without works is dead. Now we look at James and as we look at this particular subject, it tells us loud and clear that the church has work to do. And we ought to be about that work. Now every work that we do, it accomplishes just a couple of things. First of all, whatever work we do glorifies God. And after it glorifies God, it ministers to the people. So we always want to glorify Him. And we should always be prepared to minister to people. Now when we minister to people, the God that we glorify identifies with the people to such a degree that He says, "When you have done it to the least of these, my people, you have done it also unto me." So we cannot minister to them without ministering to Him. But if we do not minister to them, we cannot minister to Him. Therefore, we cannot glorify God. Now these are different times that we are faced with, different in the sense that there is in our world a virus and it's worldwide, it is pandemic. And it is causing some things that have never been caused, at least to this degree worldwide. And so the church then must be prepared to address that and address the needs of the people because there are circumstances that are coming up that we are not necessarily, or we have not necessarily, prepared ourselves for. Now every church more than likely have what we call a benevolence fund. But benevolence funds are usually there for the people in the house, those persons who make up that particular body. And certainly there is nothing wrong with that. But because we are looking at what we are looking at in these days, we're going to have to be prepared to do something extra. And so we had better move ourselves in that direction to do something a little extra, to lay aside something. Pretty much like Joseph advised Pharaoh in those years of fatness. He said, "There's going to come some lean years, seven lean years. And the fat years ought to help you to prepare for the lean years." And so they did that. They put something aside and certainly the lean years did come, but they were prepared to minister to the needs of the people. And so we need to have that mindset, we have to be prepared. Because there is a work that belongs to the church. Now unfortunately, we the church have tried to hand off this particular ministry to the government. But everyone doesn't qualify for government programs. Now what they cannot qualify for at the government level, they ought to be able to qualify at the Christian level. Because we ought to be prepared to give to everyone that asketh of us. Now James is so practical. He's almost akin, in my mind, to Solomon, he's so practical. There is nothing hard to be understood, the way that James presents this epistle. And he's writing to those persons who have been scattered. They have been, they are being persecuted for their faith in Christ. And so how do you, how do we respond to those people who are scattered, who have no stability and who are suffering need? Let me just remind us that in the eighth chapter of Acts, when the church was scattered, or the believers were scattered, if we noticed when they were scattered, how they were scattered, Jesus had told them in the first chapter of Acts, "To be witnesses unto me in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and the uttermost parts of the earth." But they stayed right there in Jerusalem. And when persecution came, they went everywhere declaring the word. They started in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and then to the uttermost parts of the earth. There is always a purpose behind God, allowing persecution for us, to scatter us and to seed us. But take with us, if we have nothing else, take with us our witness, our testimony about the goodness of God. And so even persecution is not without its purpose in the eyes and in the mind of God. Now James is saying then that we have to be prepared to take care of one another. And he challenges those that he writes to and he says,[605.00][606.00]"What doth it profit, my brethren?" Now he's writing again to Christians. And he's writing to them about the Christian responsibility, their responsibility. "My brethren, we have a responsibility. And the responsibility that we have ought to be beneficial." Now, "What doth it profit, what doth it benefit, my brethren? Though a man say he hath faith and have not works, can faith save him?" Now that's the question, can faith save you? Now you claim to have faith, but there is no evidence of your faith, there is no work. Now can faith save you? Is the question that he asked at the end. Now let me say to us that faith is necessary to salvation. It's necessary to salvation. But even faith has to come through grace. By grace are ye saved, through faith, and that not of yourselves. We'll say more about that in a moment. And I just wanted to include grace because you cannot have faith without grace. Grace alone gives us what we don't deserve. And certainly none of us deserve to be saved. Now can faith alone save him? Can faith save him is the question that James asked. Now let me declare, let me answer, no. There has to be something with your faith. And we've done many people a disservice by just, by telling them that if you want to be saved, all you have to do is just believe. Now that's, you know, it's one of those things that we have to be kind of careful with. Because Jesus says this, "As many as received Him, to them gave He power to become sons of God; as many as believed on His name." So there's not only a believing, there must be a receiving. Now believe Him and receive Him. And then you shall have the power to become a child of God. Now if we say we believe in Him, but don't receive Him, then we cannot be added to the family of God. We must receive the Son of God to be in the family of God. So what doth it profit, what doth it benefit, my brethren? Again, my brethren, now there is no ethnic meaning to the term, which includes us as well. We are part of that believing community, those who have expressed some faith in Christ. And so we are part of the brotherhood, those of us who are saved. Though a man say he hath faith, and, you know, saying you have faith is a wonderful thing. But there must be a demonstration of our faith. Now he's talking to brethren again. And in verse 15, he raises an issue. He says, "If a brother or sister be naked and destitute of daily food..." I need to pause there for just a moment and say this. He is not talking, in this instance, about feeding strangers. He said, "If a brother or sister be naked..." Now this is someone in the family, family members, if they are naked and destitute of daily food. Now there's two conditions there. They are stripped and they are starving. Now that's their condition, it's a destitute condition. Stripped and starving, naked and destitute of daily food. Now these are our family members. And the Scripture says, "Do good unto all men, but especially to them who are of the household of faith." Now they don't have daily food, there is nothing consistent. They have nothing on a regular to eat. Now notice, notice verse 16. "After we have been exposed to this brother or sister," verse 16, he says, "And one of you say unto them..." Now it's interesting to me that James keeps talking about what we say. Many of us are sayers, but we're not doing. Even in verse 14, he says, "Though a man say he hath faith..." And here in verse 16, "And one of you say unto them..." Now there are, in our midst, sad to say that we have more sayers than doers. Now he says, "They say unto them, 'Depart in peace, and be ye warmed and filled; notwithstanding, you give them not those things which are needful to the body.'" What doth it profit, there it is again, what doth it benefit? Now how do you tell a person to be warmed who came to you naked and leave you and they are still naked? But we have the audacity to say to them, "Be warmed." But we've made no provision. And not only did you say, "Be warmed," but you said, "Be filled; as if they can be warmed and filled by what you said." Now there's only one person that I know who can speak and whatever he speaks comes true. But not so with us. I know we live in a day when people talk about how you can speak your world into existence. And I hear them saying this all the time. And they go around speaking. But we must, we must notice that they cannot speak a change. If it's going to be changed at all, they have to bring into existence in a manual way what they've said, indeed if they can bring it. "Notwithstanding, you give them not those things which are needful..." Not asking for anything extra. All that, all that is being axed for is what is needful. Now that's what God promised that He would do for us, that He would supply all of our needs according to His riches and glory. And when we take care of the needs of people, that's when we are most like God and like His Son. That passage in 2 Corinthians 8 where it talks about Jesus leaving everything and then providing everything. He became poor that we might become rich. And so we have to, we have to make certain that we give offerings, offerings. And the offerings that we give ought to be sacrificial in nature. That group and that other group in that 2 Corinthians 8 chapter, the church of Macedonia, they gave out of their deep poverty. And while they were being afflicted themselves, great affliction, they gave to the needs of others. And so they were most like Christ. And if we're going to be like Christ, we cannot be like Christ being selfish. Now whatever we're going through, and I do understand that many of us are going through similar things. But if we ever learn how to give folk out of the depth of our poverty, I will guarantee you this, whatever your soul, you shall also reap. When you give, you can be sure that someone, somewhere, it may not be the individual you gave to, but somewhere someone will give to you as you have given to others. Now, "You didn't give them those things," verse 16 says, "which are needful to the body." Now there are some things that the body needs, just the body. But when we take care in a faithful way to those who have need, though we are ministering to their body, we're also strengthening their resolve and their faith. Because we have demonstrated the same in sharing with them. We strengthen them and quite frankly, it does something for us. It is not beneficial to them if we don't do it, neither is it beneficial to us, no matter how much we claim that we believe in God and have faith in God. Verse 17, he says, "Even so faith, if it hath not works, is dead," being alone. Now faith without works is dead. Sometimes I don't quite know how to, you know, be illustrative in some of this. I don't quite always know just how to approach it. But I can say this, faith without works has no life. Faith without works is a corpse. When was the last time we've seen a dead man do anything for anyone? When has a dead man ever supplied something for someone else? Or helped anyone else? He can't because he has no life. So faith without works has no life. Faith without works cannot breathe. Faith without works has no heartbeat. It may have organs, but they are not functioning because there is no life. Now here it is again, verse 18, "Yeah, man may say..." There it is again. Now three times we've talked about what we say. "Yeah, man may say, 'Thou hast faith and I have works.'" And now James challenges the person who is always saying, "Show me thy faith without thy works, and I will show thee my faith by my works." Now James has just asked this person to do something that's impossible. "Show me your faith without your works, and I will show you my faith by my works." Now I have, I've learned long ago that a person can make their mouth say anything. But just because we say something doesn't make it true. I don't care how much we believe what we're saying while we are saying it. But if there is no evidence to back it up, you cannot prove its truth. Now the proof of faith is works, right? Proof of faith is works. He says, "Show me thy faith without thy works, and I will show thee my faith by my works." You say you believe, verse 19, that there is one God? Thou doest well. The devils also believe and tremble. Isn't that something? You believe that there is one God. Now that is, that is, that is a fact, there is only one God. And you say you believe that, fine. There are many religions that talk about the one God. And, but, but is it the right God? That's the question. And they legitimately believe that heaven is theirs. But heaven is theirs by reward. And so much of the work that you see them doing is them trying to earn their way into heaven. Well, there is no such, no such earning for us. Heaven is not a reward for us because we have worked our way in that direction. Now again, "By grace are we saved, through faith, and that not of yourselves is a gift of God." "Show me thy faith without thy works, and I will show thee my faith by my works." Now, James has just asked this person to do something that's impossible. "Show me your faith without your works, and I will show you my faith by my works." Now, now, I have, I've learned, uh, long ago that a person can make their mouth say anything. But just because we say something doesn't make it true. I don't care how much we believe what we're saying while we are saying it. But if there is no evidence to back it up, you cannot prove its truth. Now, the proof of faith is works. Right? Proof of faith is works. He says, "Show me thy faith without thy works, and I will show thee my faith by my works." You say, "You believe," verse nineteen, "that there is one God? Thou doest well. The devils also believe and tremble." Isn't that something? You believe that there is one God. Now, that is, that is, that is a fact. There is, there is only one God. And you say, "You believe that." Fine. There are many religions that talk about the one God. And, um, but, but is it the right God? That's, that's the question. And they, they legitimately believe that heaven is theirs. But heaven is theirs by reward. And so, much of the work that you see them doing is them trying to earn their way into heaven. Well, there is no such, no such earning for us. Um, heaven is not a reward for us because we have worked our, our way in that direction. Now, again, "By grace are we saved, through faith, and that not of yourselves is a gift of God; not of works, lest any man should boast." So, working doesn't get us to heaven. But the next verse says that we are saved unto good works. And so, we are, we have to be engaged in good works. Now, we believe there is one God, but the one God we believe in is the one who gives us the work to do as evidence that we believe in him and we trust him. Now, notice, he says, "You do well." But he says, "The devils also believe and tremble." Now, those persons who claim to believe in one God may tremble. But trembling is not trusting. We have to trust God. We have to believe God. Now, if I believe God, I must follow God. There was the example of Abraham here, and we're going to say a bit about that in a moment. But when God called Abraham, the evidence that he trusted God and believed in God is that he followed God and had no clue as to where he was going. But you don't have to know where you're going when you trust the one you follow. He followed God, which was evidence that he believed God. And Jesus says, "If you're going to be my disciple, follow me." And you cannot follow them if your feet are not moving. Walking in the direction that they are leading us in. And there is a work to do while we're headed in that direction. Because faith in essence, when it comes to Christ, is imitating his action. Even to picking up our cross and following him daily. Now, imitating him, that's what faith is. That's what Peter did when he walked, got out of the ship. He was imitating Christ. But if you're going to imitate Christ, you have to keep your eye on Christ. Because if you don't keep your eyes on him, as Peter took his eyes off Christ, he began to sink. But faith made him cry out, "Lord, save me." And Jesus, of course, put out his hand and saved him and took him back to the safety of the ship. And so, faith then is imitating him, following him, stepping where he stepped, doing the things that he, he did and saying what he said. Uh, we trust him. Now, certainly, believing in God will make you tremble, but, uh, uh, you know, in reverence, in reverence. But we ultimately trust him. Some years ago, I, um, I, I've said to us quite often, uh, we ask one another, you know, "Are you going to make it in? You think you're going to make it in?" And our pet response is, "I'm trying." Well, whenever we say that we are trying, that means we're relying on ourselves. But when I say that I'm trusting, I'm relying on him. Now, if I'm trying and looking at myself, there is no telling where I will wind up. But if I'm trusting him, I'm guaranteed to be where he is. And so, I trust him. Now, verse twenty says, "But wilt thou, no, oh vain man, empty man, that faith with thy works is dead? Oh, empty man, your faith is as empty as you are." You're dead, and so is your faith dead. Now, that would, that, that would be, that would be, be awful, would be sad for us to think that the faith we have uh, has brought us to salvation. We've done nothing, no evidence of it has, has brought us to salvation. Then we come to church uh, every Sunday and, and thinking, "That, that's enough. Just come to church. Come to Bible store to read your Bible." And spend all of that time within the confines of the sanctuary and die and go to hell. There ought to be some evidence that your faith is legitimate, that you're believing in him. And the legitimacy of your faith is seen in your works, good works. So says Ephesians two ten, "Which are ordained for us." Now, he says, he says, um, "Was not Abraham our father justified by works, when he had offered Isaac his son upon the altar?" Now, God had, had, had said to him, uh, "Offer up your son, your only son, Isaac." And, and, um, Abraham was going to do just what God said. God said it, he would do it. Now, the interesting thing is, he promised Abraham that Isaac would be the seed through which he would bless him with, with, with the nation of people who were so populous that even the stars and the grains of sand, uh, like the, uh, stars and grains of sand couldn't be numbered. But God said, "Offer him." Now, he had to believe God because God had already proven to him that he could give him a son in the first place. At his age, through his wife, who was an old woman. But here is this boy that you said you, you would bless me with the population, a promise. He takes him up to the mount to take his life. But while he was taking him, he believed that if he took the boy's life, that he could raise the boy back up again to life. Now, there was no evidence of that. No one had ever been raised from the dead. But he believed God could do it. If anybody could do it, God can. And so, he took him up. And when God saw him raise the knife, he said, "Abraham, stay your hand." His faith was on display. He didn't just say he believed God. He showed that he believed God. Faith demands action. And God is the witness, if no one else witnessed it. No one was on that mount, but Abraham, Isaac, and God, and God saw it. Just like Jesus, when he was in that, uh, that house, when they let down the paralyzed man on, on the pallet. The scripture says that when he saw their faith, God wants to see our faith. And we ought to be willing to demonstrate our faith. Verse twenty-two says, "Seeest thou how faith wrought with his works, and by, by works was made perfect, or made complete." Faith and works go together. They complete one another. I don't know if we've ever seen that, that movie with, with Tom Cruise in it and, um, uh, Cuba Gooding Jr., uh, where the couple got on the elevator and there were two persons who, uh, were, were mute. And they gave the sign language and Tom Cruise asked what was said. And, um, she said, "They said, 'You complete me.'" And of course, Tom Cruise later in the film said that to, to his wife, "You complete me." That's what works and faith say to one another. "You complete me." I'm not complete without you. And you cannot be complete without me. They complete each other and they prove each other. They should forever be married to one another. And what God have joined together, let no man terror sunken. Verse twenty-three, listen, listen to this. "And the scripture was fulfilled, which saith, Abraham believed God." Now, give me just a moment. I'm going to say something about that. "And it was imputed unto him. It was put on his account for righteousness. He had none of his own. But righteousness was credited to his account." Why? Because he believed God. Now, notice it says, "He believed God." It did not say, "He believed in God." He believed God. There's a host of people who, who say they believe in God. But they don't believe God. Now, if you believe God, you will do what God says needs to be done. Uh, now, now, there is a difference. Now, here's what we, what we should really be, what you really shout about. If we believe God, God gives us credit for righteousness. He takes off the book, our, our sins. He takes it off the book. It's gone. Simply because we believe him. And he puts on the book righteous for our count. And then, our status changes. He is called the friend of God, my man. Used to be enemies, now we're friends. But even, 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 and, and I know, I know, uh, Jesus gives the parable in Matthew twenty-five about the servants, leaving the servants with, with, uh, several gifts and they uh, invested gifts. And he says to them, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." And then, of course, there was that slothful and wicked servant who just buried it. And so, we said, "We want to hear the Lord say, 'Well done.'" Wonderful, wonderful statement, true statement. But it's better to be a friend than a servant. Now, now, we, we're going to serve him. That, there is no doubt about that. But I want to be his friend. Jesus said to the disciples in John fifteen, fifteen, check it out. He says, "I have called you servants, but now I call you friends, because servants don't know what the master is doing like a friend." The Lord lets friends in on secrets that the servants know nothing about. And he lets us know simply because we believe him. Not just in him, but we believe him. We believe God. And why not believe God? Question. Can he lie? Let God be true and every man be a liar. Not one of God's words have ever fallen to the ground. And so, though we tremble, we ought to trust him no matter what. Because he lets friends in on things servants don't know. Now, he says in verse twenty-four, "You see then how that by works a man is justified, and not by faith only, because they're married together." Right? Now, works, again, proves faith. Works are the signature of faith. That's, that's how you know it's there. And it's a signature that can't be forged. And, and it's an individual effort. It's individual, like my signature is an individual signature. No one can sign like me. That, that may be some people who will for, try to forge my signature. But there is, there is, there is a way, uh, for persons who, who know forgery to look at it and, and, and validate whether it's mine or it's been forged. Now, if anyone can tell of forgery, God can. And maybe we won't say signature. If I did the work, my fingerprints are on it. And the one thing you cannot forge are the fingerprints of someone else. And so, let us then, those of us who are brethren, who are part of the community of faith, make certain that our fingerprints are on the work. Now, Jesus says, "Let your light so shine that men may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." Now, here we have, uh, that patriarch, Abraham. Wow. Now, he goes from a patriarch to a prostitute. Likewise, also, was not Rahab the harlot justified by works, when she had received the messengers and had sent them out another way? For as a body without the spirit is dead, so faithful our works is dead also." He goes from a patriarch to a prostitute. Now, faith and works are the great equalizer. It puts us all in, on the same plane. Guess what? Abraham's name is in the hall of faith, Hebrews eleven. But don't stop reading at Abraham's name. If you look down a little further, not only will you see Abraham's name, but you will see Rahab's name. Abraham a Hebrew, Rahab a harlot. But both of them are being praised for their faith in God. Now, both of them had, 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 uh, faith and works. And these two go together. Now, we the church, we the church then need to be about the business of, um, doing what the Lord has said for, for us to do. And we ought to do it with gladness, with eagerness, and with a quickness. God bless your heart. Hope you're blessed by this ministry. And be sure that we are praying for you. Amen.